Yeah, we don't like each other.
That's right. We'll call this meeting to order. And we welcome everyone. Appreciate you being here and being part of the public process. The first thing is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion that we adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And then we need a motion for approval of the August 14th minutes. So move by Matt Smith. And second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Price. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Great. Do we have any council members with us today? I don't see any. Okay, thanks. And do we have items, Ms. Ziegler, for deferral or withdrawal?
Yes. Yes, we do have two items for deferral or withdrawal. On page four, items number four, 919 Lawrence is deferred because they did not meet their requirements for notifications. And same on page four, number seven, 1314 Sixth Avenue North, they also did not meet their requirements for notifications.
Okay, great. And do we have a report on consent items?
Before that, just a notice to applicants. If you are approved for a preservation permit today and you are not the contractor, please know that it is your responsibility to make sure that the contractor has a copy of the preservation permit before beginning work. The preservation permit includes items that require final approval and inspection requirements. The final drawings are part of the preservation permit. Following the preservation permit will save you time and money as enforcements of violations can sometimes be lengthy and expensive. The preservation permit is also not a building permit. No work can begin without the approval, I'm sorry, without the appropriate review and approval by the Metropolitan Department of Codes Administration. So now on to the consent agenda item. The consent items on the consent agenda will be read aloud to determine if there is opposition present. If there's opposition present, the items will be heard at the end of the meeting in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, then the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As a notice to the public, consent items will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Okay, so I'm going to go through these one by one, and if there's anyone here in opposition to the item, please raise your hand. So first is on page three, number one, administrative permits issued for the prior month. Number two, also on page three, 813 Boscoval Street. Anyone here in opposition to this item? Okay. Number three, 227 Chapel Avenue. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? Number five, 2030 10th Avenue South. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? Number six is listed as part of the consent agenda, but that will be moved to new business. Number eight, 207 Third Avenue North. Is there anyone here opposed to this item? Number nine, 1813, or 1834 Fourth Avenue North. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? Number 10, 1323 to 1329 Sixth Avenue North. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? Number 11, 3517 Richland Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? And number 12, 3605 Central Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? Okay, so those are the items on the consent agenda. I'm going to now read through all the consent items as legal information. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of certiorari with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met, please be advised to seek your own independent legal counsel. Okay, so I'm going to go through the consent agenda one more time. Starting on page three, item number one, administrative permits issued for the prior month. On the same page three, item number two, 813 Boscoval Street, an application for alterations and new construction of an addition and outbuilding. On page three, item number three, 227 Chapel Avenue, an application for new construction of an addition. Page four, item number five, 2030 10th Avenue South, application for a new construction of an addition and outbuilding. On page four, item number eight, 207 Third Avenue North, application for signage. On page five, item number nine, 1813, 1834 Fourth Avenue North, application for new construction of an addition and a setback determination. On page five, item 10, 1323 to 1329 Sixth Avenue North, application for signage. On page five, number 11, 3517 Richland Avenue, application for new construction of an addition. On page five, item 12, 3605 Central Avenue, application for new construction of an addition. So the recommendation is for all these items is to approve the consent agenda with the conditions listed in the staff recommendations.
Great. So do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, seeing no objection from the gallery, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented in the meeting today.
Thank you, Mr. Mosely. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Cashin, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Okay. We can see it.
All right. Okay, so the first item to be heard is 106 Rosebank Avenue. This is a request for an addition. So the lot at 106 Rosebank Avenue was created in 2014 by subdividing off the rear of the lot at 1101 Porter Road. The Historic Zoning Commission approved infill and an outbuilding on this property in June 2020. So this current application is for a side addition to this non-contributing house. So since the house is non-contributing, the design guidelines say that the project should be reviewed as infill to ensure that the addition, any additions are appropriate for the historic context. So the historic context on this block of Rosebank Avenue includes modest one and one and a half story homes, as seen here. Most of the lots are 50 feet wide, including these examples. However, there are examples of wider lots, including the ones shown here. The top photo is 107, sorry. I lost my place. Anyway, so the top example is a 100-foot wide lot where you have a historic home that had a side addition that was added later. You can see here it's a single story. The bottom example is also a wide lot, I believe 60 feet wide, where you have a building that is up to 36 feet wide. So with that modest context in mind, we'll look at the proposal, which is to add a side addition, which would extend the building width from 36 feet wide to approximately 50 feet wide. The ridge of the addition would sit six inches below the existing ridge, and a dormer would be added to the upper level, which would effectively extend that one and a half story form for the full 50 feet of building width. Also, the proposed dormer would effectively straddle the existing side corner over the open porch, which is on the lower level of the proposed addition. So staff finds that extending the one and a half story massing for the full width of the addition would lead to an overall massing that's atypical for the historic context on this block of Rosebank Avenue, even when considering examples of wider homes on wider lots on this block. So while the massing as proposed does not meet the design guidelines, staff finds that a true one-story side addition with a lower height could be appropriate, given the width of the lot. So in addition to the massing concerns, the addition would further reduce the separation between the primary structure and the outbuilding. Currently, the house is less than six feet from the outbuilding, as measured from the sidewalls of both structures. The rear wall of the house is currently eight feet from the outbuilding. However, the two structures, as you can see, are offset at this point. The proposed addition would reduce this separation to approximately four feet six inches. The addition as proposed meets all other setbacks and would match the existing front setback of the house. Here's the proposed right side elevation. The rear roof plane of the addition culminates in a taller eve, likely due to the proximity of the addition to the existing outbuilding. And here we can see the addition in relation to the rear elevation of the house and outbuilding. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the side addition to the non-contributing house, finding that the project does not meet the sections listed here, primarily for massing and scale, roof form, additions to non-contributing buildings, and for the distance between the primary structure and outbuilding.
Thank you, Melissa. Is the applicant here? If you'll please give us your name and address.
Okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Johnny Wagman. My address is 101 Rosebank Avenue. Okay. Thanks to staff for working through us with this, talking to us about this project, and thanks to the commissioners for being here, spending your time here, and all you do in historic preservation in Nashville. This was an infill project that I did back in 2020, as they stated. We also did the historic renovation at 1101 Porter Road at the same time. This has always been a challenging lot. It's 73 feet wide by 80s, six feet deep. And so we spent about three months working with Shawn Alexander, trying to find a form that would fit well on this lot in context. And then again, I am the neighbor. I'm the corner parcel in the left-hand corner there, and still live there. And so it was important to me for this to be an attractive home and to fit in, in the context of our neighborhood. It's been a cool project. People, most people think it's a historic renovation. Since then, we sold the property in 2021. Our neighbors moved in, and they've been fantastic neighbors, and their family has grown. And the house that we built no longer fits their family, and we all know kind of the situation in Nashville. So they approached me about trying to find a way to add additional living space to this home, and it's extremely tricky. So that's a little bit of the context. One thing is, we may have had an error on our survey that was provided. There should be six feet of separation from the dada to the home, and what we're proposing is still six feet of separation, which I believe is the minimum that fire code allows. So that would be an error on our part. But, and then just a little additional context, we tried to explore the first-story addition, and there's just, the way that the floor plan of the existing home is, there's no way to connect on the first floor to a first-story addition that would be off to that east side of the house. So the idea is that there'd be an outdoor living space on the first story, and then the second story would be where we'd be able to add additional living space. So understand that the design guidelines don't call for this. I've been, I've done a number of preservation permits, and our goal is always for it to fit in with the design guidelines, and this is the first time we've had to appear in front of you, asking for, really what we're asking for is feedback on it, more than anything, because it's such a unique and interesting situation, that all the other lots in the neighborhood are 50 by 170, 200 feet deep. And this is essentially a square, and it's also on an alley, which also makes it challenging. So really with that, our hope today is to try and figure out if this is, is to be in front of the commission and say, you know, we'd like to add additional living space to this home in a way that's practical and feasible, and we'd like to do it in a way that, that looks good in our neighborhood. We hope this house will stand for 100 years like the rest of the homes in the neighborhood. So, and with that, we could either come back with more information, if we can figure out something, or a more robust packet that has additional or changes to it, to the architecture. So I think that's, that's really the gist of where we're at today with this application.
One question. In looking at the drawings, it looks like the lower level is just an open deck, but covered with a living room up on the upper level. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So essentially what's there right now is kind of an outdoor living space, because there's only 20 feet, there's a 20-foot setback in the rear right now. And so the hope was to have some sort of outdoor living space in this. And the reason is, is that the three windows on the, that are shown on the first floor is the primary bedroom. So there's just no connection point from the first floor into a, an addition in that space.
Any questions for the applicant?
Well, yeah, whatever. I don't think you covered this in your presentation, but what about a rear addition?
I guess that would be, you know, I was actually looking at the site plan as we were sitting here. That's a, that's a great question, honestly. I was thinking about that. We'd have to ask.
It's a shallow lot, but, and I know probably the owners want to preserve a backyard, but it would avoid the main problem that we're being presented with, so, yeah.
So that would be a question for the commission, which would be, would it be more digestible to have a larger addition on the rear with these tight setbacks, with five-foot setbacks than to the side? We'd have to study in terms of the connection point, but obviously there's a rear door that'd be kind of a natural connection in that point. Seen some heads nod yes and no. So that's super helpful, you know, in a lot of ways. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to have discussions, you know, and go through this.
But I have, I have a question, but it's my understanding we can't discuss or approve anything that might be. It's just what's in front of us right now.
Oh.
Am I correct on that? Yeah.
Does, does the Betcha Historic Zoning Commission have a opportunity to have a discussion item added to an agenda, like under?
I think in this case, it would be after this meeting, like tomorrow or sometime next week, we talk about it.
Okay.
And, you know, talk about what you're looking for, and we can give you some preliminary feedback and work towards plans to present to this commission, especially if a rear setback determination's needed.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we can't take action on anything that's not before us, but in the past, we have been able to give some suggestions if, that, that might be, doesn't guarantee anything would be approved, but it can give some direction that might be more acceptable to the commission.
Exactly. We can't give you a definite yes or no, only the plans that are in front of us right now.
Yeah, understood. Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Mr. Wagman. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. I guess in this scenario, should we request a deferral on this? Can we do that from the, from the stand? Because it's, I don't know if we're going to want to vote on this today.
I mean, my thought with a deferral is if you defer it, you would have full plans to come back next month for a rear addition, and maybe you withdraw and just submit when you're ready.
Sure. Yeah, that would be the question.
It wouldn't have to be a deferral to a date certain. You could just request a deferral.
An indefinite deferral. Okay, sure. Because that would be my fear, is that like, in a lot of planning commissions, if it's voted on, it can't come back for X amount of time. Does historic have the same?
If a plan changes, you can submit a new plan every month if you like.
Wonderful.
In this case, if I could offer a suggestion, if you defer it, withdraw it, there will be no discussion. There may be some discussion that would be useful to you, and by presenting new information, yeah, you, you might get voted down. We still have to discuss this application, but I guess, what's the harm in coming back with something different with new information, which you certainly have the right to do at the next meeting if you can prepare the requested and required materials?
Yeah, that, that would be great. I think that would, I appreciate that. My fear was just if there was some sort of mechanism that we have to have a certain amount of time. But if there isn't, if we can come up with a new application and just let you all discuss this now, take that feedback into a new design, that's, that was our goal for today. So, thank you.
Awesome. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagman. So with that, open public hearing. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak to this project? Closed public hearing, commissioners?
Following up on my question to the applicant, I would suggest that they, he and the homeowners maybe consider a rear addition. I think that there'd be an opportunity, considering the lower level is really open living space with some enclosed living space above, and very early in the design guidelines with, for additions, it encourages additions on the rear of the building. I mean, that's kind of what we're, standard fare for what we, we look at every month. And I think there's probably a solution there, that, given the base setbacks of five feet, you should have plenty of room in the back to get roughly this amount of floor, floor space. So that would be my contribution to things.
In, I think in, in offering a preference, or in anticipating, I shouldn't say that, in an evaluation of, you know, a project, a front addition and/or, you know, filling more of the street while not in itself objectionable, a rear addition, rear additions have been more, as a percentage, seem to have been approved at a greater rate, in, in just my mental recollection of that, than, than things that, side additions that are more visible from the front, that just require a more stringent review from this body in general. And so I would, in evaluating that as a, as a possibility for this, and given some of the objections to a single-story side addition, might be a useful path as well, yeah.
I think my colleagues are probably correct in their advice. I have a, a bit more of a general question. Could I get a little bit more info on just the overall overlay and how context is determined? Because it looks, when you just kind of look at it, there's a lot of redevelopment on, what I'm guessing is, nonhistoric tall and skinnies.
Right, yeah. And the guidelines direct us to look at the historic context. So the tall and skinnies, which were constructed prior to the overlay being extended to this block, which I think was, subdivision was 2014, so it was shortly thereafter, would not come into play when looking at that context.
Gotcha. So how many on that block, or how many are we looking at?
Well, generally, we just look at that one block, assuming that there is a good historic context, you know, a good collection. If there is not, and it's necessary to look out further to, you know, maybe the block beyond that, then, then of course we'll do that.
What do we do in this case?
In this case, there was a good historic context, and I did not include that map, but primarily one and one and a half story, and modest one and a half story historic homes at that.
Okay.
And, and I will say, when the commission considered this infill back in 2020, I know there was a lot of discussion about getting that height and width right for this lot, just because the way it was created is, it is wider than the typical lot seen on this block. So there, there was compromise at that point when the infill was considered.
Okay. When we, could you include that map at our next, when we?
The next time you see this?
Perhaps when we, when we hear it again?
Yeah.
Because it looks like you've got a lot of non-contributing, this one's non-contributing. Its neighbor is deemed an anomaly. Its neighbor on the other side is deemed an anomaly. So I'm, I'm curious as to how much context we have here. But that would be helpful. Thank you.
No problem.
Good comment. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
With respect to 106 Rosebank, I move for disapproval citing the staff's recommendations as it not meeting massing and scale. Certainly, I think, based on previous comments, applicant is free to pursue other options.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is 811 North 16th Street. This is a request to construct an outbuilding on this property at 811 North 16th Street. You did receive public comment on this project. So the house on this property is a circa 1930 bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. So the application includes demolition of both existing outbuildings, as well as the removal of the driveway that runs parallel to Sumner Avenue, almost right at the street. The outbuilding closest to Seymour Avenue appears on the 1951 Sandborne map. While the building was in early condition, perhaps original, but at least in early condition, the commission has found demolition of most outbuildings, especially those that are not high-style carriage houses, to be appropriate, since frequently these outbuildings were not constructed that well and definitely don't accommodate the cars we drive today. The outbuilding located on the interior side is a prefabricated shed that does not contribute to the historic character of the overlay. So staff finds demolition of both structures to meet the design guidelines. The proposed outbuilding is located in the rear yard. It meets all setbacks that, structure you see that looks closer than 20 feet is actually an uncovered deck, so, which is not reviewed in this overlay. As proposed, the outbuilding meets all of the design, design guidelines except for ridge height. Since the property is a corner lot, the ridge height of the outbuilding should not exceed that of the primary structure. In this case, the outbuilding has a ridge height of 23 feet 2 inches, measured from grade, while the historic house has a ridge height of 21, 21 feet from top of foundation. So, bit on measurement. So to ensure that proportionally the massing of the outbuilding does not exceed that of the historic house, the ridge height of the house has been taken from top of foundation, while the ridge height of the outbuilding has been measured from highest point of grade. So this method, it does take into account that most outbuildings, especially that are used as garages, are either slab-on-grade or have very minimal foundation height from highest point of grade. So since the rear of this lot is only separated from the side yard of the house behind it, which is 1608 Sumner Avenue, by a 15-foot wide alley, staff looked at how the scale of this outbuilding would also impact that historic home, which is actually a historic duplex, showed up on the Sandmore map as well. But for reference, the new outbuilding would be located approximately in the location of the shed near the interior property line. The house at 1608 Sumner is approximately 18 feet tall from top of foundation, which was, was field-verified by our inspector, to the ridge. At the front of the house, the foundation is about three feet, but that gradually decreases as it goes towards the rear of the house due to how the grade rises. As a result, the outbuilding would also likely rise above the contributing house at 1608 Sumner as well. So just some background, in cases where the historic house is modest in height, like, like this one, and an interior lot, so this would apply to districts that are not in the consolidated design guidelines. The commission has allowed for the outbuildings to be taller than the historic house, up to 21 feet. However, since the ridge height of this historic house is 21 feet from top of foundation, staff would recommend that the height of the outbuilding be limited to 21 feet, measured from grade. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval. So just some background, in cases where the historic house is modest in height, like, like this one, and an interior lot, so this would apply to districts that are not in the consolidated design guidelines. The commission has allowed for the outbuildings to be taller than the historic house, up to 21 feet. However, since the ridge height of this historic house is 21 feet from top of foundation, staff would recommend that the height of the outbuilding be limited to 21 feet, measured from grade. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Condition number one, that the ridge height of the outbuilding not exceed 21 feet as measured from grade. And then conditions two through four are standard conditions about material reviews. And the applicant is here, happy to answer questions.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Of course.
I think you mentioned that we got a public comment on this, but I'm not seeing it in the SharePoint folder. And did it come in late?
No.
Okay.
It should have been added to the, I can summarize, it was from a neighbor, Louis Graber, who it seemed his main concerns were the demolition of the early outbuilding at the corner and removal of that driveway, which is why I addressed that.
Any other questions for Melissa? Thank you. Thanks. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Public speaking is not my favorite thing. I'm the owner of 811 North 16th Street, so I've been trying to get this dada built for about a year now. We've been bouncing.
Excuse me, could you give us your name?
Oh, I'm Alana Cunningham. Sorry about that. So I've been trying to get this dada built for about a year and a half. The idea is that I have a two-car garage below where I can, I teach Pilates. So I can run my small Pilates studio from under there, and then my fiance can run his office from upstairs. And it being a little apartment, so, a little transitional apartment. We are planning on having kids and just need a little bit more room for that. So that is why we just need a little bit more ceiling height. And we were considering with the grade of the lot going down, that from North 16th Street, you wouldn't actually be able to see the ridge line from the other side of the road. So it'd be underneath that original ridge, ridge line, even though it hit that 23 feet tall. That is our only concession that we would like to be done with this dada project. Every other issue, we are more than happy to comply with.
Questions? The applicant? Thank you very much.
I have, I have a question. So here in the recommendation, it says ridge heights of the outbuilding shall not exceed 21 feet. And how tall do you want it?
23.
23. Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I may interrupt, would you like me to read the public comment? Just so we have it in the record?
That'd be wonderful.
Dear sir or madam, I'm writing in regards to the variance requested for the proposed dada at 811 North 16th in the historic overlay of Eastwood Neighborhoods. It's my understanding that the specific variance request is for the height restriction for a dada on a corner lot, which the staff is recommending for disapproval. Generally speaking, my thoughts on the rules for historic overlay and that is that they should be observed unless there's some real hardship demonstrated. In this specific case, I'm guessing that the owner feels that their hardship is that the existing house is too short to get real usable space in the typical dada design being built everywhere else in this neighborhood. And that this typical form will not fit in alignment with the historic driveway placement. It is my view that the main problems here are not only building height, but also site plan. It's my view that where these outbuildings are placed on the lot is crucial, contributing factor to the historic fabric of the neighborhood. I do not believe that demolishing an original historically contributing in style and site structure in order to build a new non-contributing, also in both style and site, structure is good for the historic fabric of the neighborhood, especially on a corner. Also, it's my view that this particular lot is unique and requires careful planning so that something can be built that conserves the feel of the historic site plan. It seems that, that because historic zoning can override typical metro setback rules, as well as height rules, and can bend their own rules as they see fit, the owners with their designer, architect if they have one, could work with the historic, with historic to come up with a plan that incorporates the shape of the existing outbuilding into a new building that satisfies, satisfies the needs of the owner, as well as the needs of the historic neighborhood, even if it needs to be a little bit taller than the rules allow, an outside normal setback, and even footprint rules, within reason. Hopefully, this collaboration would lead to a structure that is unique and contributes to the historic aspect of the neighborhood, as opposed to sticking a cookie cutter, maxed-out form anywhere on the lot that will fit it. Sincerely, Louis, Louis Graber.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Would you like me to comment on those outbuildings and their structural integrity?
Sure. I think that'd be fine. Yeah. Sure.
So the rebuttal will be that they are not on a foundation, they're structurally unsound, and frankly, termites have done some severe damage to the inside of those buildings. So they wouldn't be able to be saved. Because originally, the idea that I looked at was to save those buildings, use the existing structure, and try and find that room to save those buildings. But unfortunately, it would not be able to be done. They are also not historically accurate, because they weren't built when the house was built. And that shed that has the red arrow over it is actually sitting over the alleyway. And so the setback isn't correct and isn't good for Metro garbage to be able to collect either. So that is why we decided finally to get rid of those outbuildings. Also, getting rid of the asphalt in that driveway, that was added on later as well and wasn't part of the original existing historical part of this whole thing. So I wanted to remove that asphalt, remove all of the chain link fence, and make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, putting in wood fencing, and better like gardening and some cute stuff.
That's helpful. Thank you. Good. Great. Any other questions? The applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing. If anyone who wishes to speak about this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
There was some comment to address site planning. I don't know. I think if the building, it would be more obtrusive, like all things about the building, even if we deem that 21 feet is hard, hard top, having that building closer to the street, I'm seeing an implied setback that by the side setback of this one and the front setback of the adjacent one, to have a, have a building that's an outbuilding pushed to the street seems less in, in a, just purely from site planning, seems less compatible in the neighborhood. And, and so anything that is not that existing garage building, which was, you know, not original to this house, that seems not in, it's not moving the project in, in the, in the right direction, just, you know, purely as an opinion on, on site planning. I guess another way to say that, it seems appropriately cited as, as, you know, in the application.
Yeah, I agree. Really, the main question is height.
Yeah.
So on, on the height, I can understand the, the requested modification. The controlling guideline, to me, is on page seven of the staff recommendation that buildings on corner lots shall not exceed the primary building. I know we've had these requests a number of times and pretty much stuck to the guidelines as they are for this type of project. It would be hard to, to grant it in this case when there's not really any other major consideration on the lot or site plan to allow the additional height. I don't know how it would be fair to other applicants that we've denied similar requests to, to grant this one. So I looked at the floor, the proposed floor plan. It's a pretty typical dada with a bedroom and a bathroom and, you know, looks like an apartment. I'm hoping that even if we do stick to the guidelines as written, that the applicant can still get plenty of useful space up there with a redesign that takes the two feet of height back out of it.
Two questions. One is, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused by the measuring from foundation at some point and measuring from grade and others, given that foundation's normally 18 to 36 inches. So how tall is the main structure?
So the main structure is a 21 plus.
It says 21 foot from top of foundation.
And I think when you say 18 to 36 inches, that, that may be for like a primary structure. Like, most outbuildings that we see are slab-on-grade. And if there is more of a foundation, it's away from the alley. So like usually, even with the slope at one point, like that wall height is lower. So I think with the measurements, we were thinking proportionally.
I guess my question is, is, so we want them to be 21 feet from grade. That is the condition, condition number one. And the main building is 21 feet from the top of foundation. So is it actually 22 to 24, 25 feet tall?
I'm so sorry. I was just gonna say that the reason we measure the primary house from top of foundation is because that measurement can change dramatically from one corner to the next. The slope can go from left to right, front to back. Where are you measuring, taking that measurement from? And since usually outbuildings are at grade on a slab, that kept the two proportional. That, that was kind of the reasoning behind those measurements being taken that way.
I hear you. But we deal with that downtown. We take an average of the four corners. We do. I mean, it, I'm with you. But I think if you say this can't be taller than this, and then you cut the ankles off this, you're not giving an accurate height of the main building. I mean, is that, am I, is, am I wrong?
It's to keep it.
Am I speaking crazy?
Proportionally, to keep it proportional. We did, for a while, try taking them, an average of all four corners. But sometimes we're the lot dramatically dipped in the back. That allowed for an outbuilding that was way over what anyone really anticipated. So we, we've been at this for a little while and tried some different avenues, and this one seems to be working the best.
I hear you. It also looks like there's about six feet of grade from the front door of the house to the alley of drop. So I didn't know if that made any difference as far as things being taller. I hear you. I, measuring, I think measuring, using two different measurements is not something that seems like a good thing to me. Because I, I think 21 plus 18 inches is pretty close to where we're at. And if I build a house with less than 18-inch foundation, I'll be cited. I mean, that, that, there has to be 18 inches of foundation in any new home. Maybe there is an old historic, and I 100% with you that it travels with grade and that, you know, you're, you're trying to get that finished floor elevation to be level, not, not the grade. That being said, I, I don't like the shortcut. And it sounds like we're, we've tried several different things. I think I'll just go on the record, I don't like this method. Because I think we're arguing about something that's not taller, in reality. And I, I don't know. That's where I'm at. I, I know that doesn't come with a lot of conclusions towards the end. I just, 21.2 plus 18 inches, which is a minimum, I would think is, is two inches shy where they want to be. I think I'd rather tell them to cut two inches than two feet. I don't know.
Some, listen, the image that's on the screen, where, where would the bottom of that measurement be taken from?
The bottom of the measurement, so from the top of the foundation, which it's hard to see here because it's a, it's pretty shadowed. But it would be taken.
It's like a gray stone or something.
Right, yeah. And you can see it better from the side elevation. There's a clear delineation of the foundation line.
It's on the right or the left.
You know, where the finished floor is.
If you look at the left, you can see the stone. Kind of the bottom of the wall. It's how my house is too.
This is a good example, where you do have a cross move. You know, at what point do you measure, and maybe a section kind of showing the grade on site and how the outbuilding, anyway, just thoughts.
I mean, I would try to measure them both from grade, is what I think I would do. That's not, not up to me.
Yeah, I think the problem is, where do you count where's contour, which contour? Because I know buildings in my neighborhood that are on a really steep slope, the back wall is, the foundation is 10 feet tall. You know?
I would just like to keep them both the same. If we're saying one can't be taller than the other, they shouldn't have a different form of measurement.
Yeah, I think, I think the problem is where staff has come up with this. Robin, do you know roughly how long is this form of, this method of measurement has the staff been using?
I think we started trying it out prior to the consolidated, which was around 2019, 2020. And that's when we made it a formal part of the design guidelines. Again, as you said, it's about keeping it proportional as opposed to keeping it taller as if you're standing there on the street. So if you had a lot that dramatically dropped, and you're saying that the building, the outbuilding could be as tall as the historic building, that might be a building that's significantly taller proportionally than the historic building. And then there was so much confusion as to where we made the measurements and how we did the calculation. This seemed to be the easiest way for applicants to understand how to meet those guidelines.
I'm with you. That, that's every back addition we do. Has a basement, is bigger than, is bigger than the front. So, I mean, my definition would be if you got a level laser pointer on the ridge beam. I know that's a little tough to do. It may be impossible to do. But the idea that it, it can't be taller proportionally is, I bet we approved five of them today on the consent.
You're saying that we approved five outbuildings that were taller than the original structure?
I'm saying that we allow back additions to be drastically taller proportionally than the building they're being added to.
If, if the grade is.
If, when the grade drops, and a lot of the grade drops. Distance from top, from, from top of, of, or bottom of building to top of building. Now, it's different. This is a different building.
Right.
I'm not trying to say they're exactly the same. But some of that thinking, we don't, if you have a back addition, we don't make you bring the grade up and, or say you can't go to that top ridge line, because this is only 18 feet, so you have to do 18 feet here. We let them do 28 feet if they have a 10-foot drop.
But in my mind, that's apples and oranges. I mean, you're doing an addition on a house, and this is a separate structure.
It, 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 it is, but they're both fruit. I, I mean, I'm with you. I just, in one, we say it can't go above the ridge. And we don't measure that by, by proportionality to the grade, or we account for that. We, we let that contribute. In this case, it seems we are not. And I, I, I don't know. I guess I'm just stirring it up. I'm not, I'm not trying to. I think I would, I think I will just leave it at that and say that I would, I would be for an approval without condition one.
Yeah, we've, we're just having discussion among our things, so.
I think the, the reason that we've come to the way that this is measured, the way the staff does the measurements is because it's important to have some kind of standard that everybody who comes before us is held to somewhat the same. No matter what your lot or grade is, held to the same standard of measurement. Because otherwise, if, if we start doing averages and from this corner or that corner, it opens up every case that comes before us to endless rounds of argument about where should, it should be measured from. So I think through a process, long process of elimination, the staff has come up with this as the fairest. It's not going to please everybody all the time, and nothing about this process, as we know, ever does. But it's about finding the best or the least bad way of doing it. So given the long precedent of several years that this is the way we've been doing it for all applicants, I think it makes sense to keep doing it the way it's been done, even, even if it is imperfect in all. If, if it's not always. been done, even, even if it is imperfect in all, if, if it's not always perfect, or if there's, I mean, you could take apart every application if we all of a sudden decide to up, up, upend it and do it based on foundation height versus proportionality, I guess is what I'm saying.
So, you know, and you're exactly right. No zoning or historic tool is a perfect tool to be used. There are flaws with all of them. I, I guess when I look at this one, I look at the intent of this guideline, and it sounds to me like, I mean, what, to me, the bottom line is, the intent is, we don't want the dado to be taller than the, than the structure, you know, from a perceptual standpoint. And I guess that, you know, as Commissioner Smith says, I, I think we'd be hard pressed to say, yes, this dado is going to be taller than the structure from the standpoint of, from, you know, even from the front grade here, it looks like we're at least a foot above the foundation, or a foot below the foundation to the grade. So, so we're, we're, as he said, fairly close. And so to me, we do have the leeway to make some modification, realizing that when the next one comes to us and it's, you know, and, and the thing is way off, that we, that we can stick with our guidelines and not, not sacrifice that.
I would agree, I'd agree with that, and I appreciate Matt's comments. It's good, good food for thought for how we do it. And, and your point there is well taken. So thanks.
I mean, I think it's a unique project in that it, it does appear to be very close to the same height, so. Other thoughts?
What about splitting the difference? That probably won't make anyone happy.
Well, you know, we talk so much about precedent. How do we feel about that?
I, I would, I welcome the next one. I mean, I, I just want to get this one right. I'm not at all worried about precedent. I, I, I know that's unpopular to say, I just want to get this one right. When the next one, on number 15, I'll try to get that one right. I mean, I, I don't want to do something I think is wrong because of a longstanding, you know, tradition of existence. And I, but I, I'm, I'm, I understand that's the way we've been doing things, obviously. It sounds like for years, it's the first time, and this is a shame on me, the first time I've really seemed to have picked up on it. I've been here a year. So I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to rock, but I'm not trying to, whatever, I just, in this case, it does seem pretty germane to exactly what we're talking about. And, and I, I'm, I'm happy to go with the board, but man, we're pretty close. And when we're, when we're quabbling over details, which are important, because that's why we're here, I'd like to get them as right as possible. And I, I, I don't mean that the way we were doing it was not right. The way we're doing it was how everyone's been instructed to do it, and I don't think anyone did anything incorrectly or wrong. But that's why we're here, is to offer some amount of counsel and, and advice, and it's worth what we're being paid, so.
And I do think, from the question of precedent, if, if the next one does not meet the standard of, are they the same height, then I don't think there's, I don't think that's a conflict. I don't see that as, as a problem. But anyway, okay.
And I just wanted to say, I also thank Commissioner Smith for his comments, and I think we have to, it's great to start to look at those types of nitty gritty details. But also with what Chair Stewart said, I think we just need to take a look at this and see if we can live with, you know, this variance, this extra two feet, and just make a decision. And I think, we do talk about precedent a lot, but it's part of our job to figure out and decide each one of these cases individually too. So I'm not worried about a precedent, this was said, so much as just finding the right outcome for this one particular application.
Do you hear a motion or more discussion? Commissioner Smith?
I move in regard to number 14, 811 North 16th Street, to approve with all conditions, omitting condition one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mosley. Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Turn on your mic.
Oh, thanks. If we just omit commission, could there be a friendly suggestion to? Okay. You can do it. I don't know that I want to tackle it, but could we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Let me rephrase that. With regard to item number 14, 800 North 16th Street, I move to approve with all conditions, editing condition one to be 23 feet from measured from grade in lieu of 21 feet.
If I'm right?
They're actually proposing 23 feet, two inches, so, so let's just-
Two inches?
No, no. No, we'll do it. Well, you know, well-
As proposed.
As proposed.
As proposed. Thank you.
Second, second amended motion?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Got that. Okay. No, no, don't be sorry. No, 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 don't be sorry. Okay, okay. Motion passes.
Yeah, it doesn't sound good. No. I'll try to speak loudly. Okay, next up is an application for infill at 108 South 13th Street and the former location of the East End United Methodist Church. The church was destroyed by tornado in 2020 and ultimately demolished. The historic rectory building survived the tornado and remains standing on the northwest corner of the parcel facing onto Holly Street. This house is contributing and cannot be demolished. A developer has purchased the parcel and established lots to build four new houses. The commission will review the design of each new house as those plans are submitted. Today, we're reviewing only 108 South 13th Street, but I want to take a few minutes to discuss the overall development plan, since the setback heights and grading on this lot will impact the future houses as well. You can see here that three 50 foot wide lots have been created on the southern end of the parcel. Today's project is indicated by the arrow at Lot 32. On the northern portion of the parcel, the developer plans to build a larger house on a double lot. This is common in the greater historic context, and we'll discuss further when that project comes before you. They subdivided the three northern lots to create one smaller lot for the historic rectory building and a large L-shaped corner lot facing onto Holly Street. This new lot has alley access behind the rectory. The grade slopes down from the alley towards South 13th Street with a drop of about 10 feet. There's also cross slope down from Holly toward Russell and a depression where the church structure sat. The houses across the street all sit low to the ground with backyards that fall away from the street and pick up partial basement levels. While staff does not typically support grade manipulation that builds up the height of the grade, this is a unique situation, given the hole resulting from the demolition, the complicated natural grade, and the lack of an existing developed block face. To illustrate the intent, the applicant submitted this grading plan to show how they intend to terrace and grade the entire parcel. A stepped retaining wall will be added and continued along the full block face at the sidewalk, and the grade will be terraced with the retaining walls and leveled where necessary. The street section is if you're standing at Russell looking towards Holly, and this illustrates how the existing and proposed houses stair-step down the hill from 12th to the alley to 13th. The house on the far right, shown across the street on 13th, is a four-square, and that is the tallest house on that block. The rest of the houses are more modest at one and a half stories. The proposed houses on the west side of 13th Street will sit up from the street several feet. The applicant also submitted a streetscape of the proposed block face to illustrate how the grading will appear from the street. Given the overall context, the natural grade, and the current conditions, staff finds that the proposed grading plan is generally appropriate. There may be details to work out on other sites, but at 108 South 13th, staff supports the grading as proposed. Now turning to the proposed house at 108 South 13th Street. Given the lack of context on this block face, staff looked to a slightly wider historic context to determine appropriate massing and form for new houses. There are several examples of two and a half story houses on 50 foot wide lots, and the proposed height and width are appropriate to the context as well. The front setback will match that of the houses across the street at 27 feet from the sidewalk. The side and rear setbacks meet base zoning. A future outbuilding is indicated, but not a part of this application. Here are the side elevations. This proposal meets the guidelines for materials, form, massing, roof form, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings. And here is the rear elevation and roof plan. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with standard conditions seen here on the screen regarding material approvals and utility locations. That's a lot. Available for questions. The applicant is here as well. Questions for me now?
I've got a quick one related to existing site features, site retaining walls. Can you speak to their condition at this particular lot and just in general from your understanding?
Yes, I didn't include a ton of photos, but I think you can see here, let's see. So there on the right, you can see kind of the, a piece of that retaining wall that remains. That, so this is on 13th, looking up towards the alley. The church structure was on the corner to your right. So this piece here, that retaining wall continues all the way around the corner, runs up Holly. So this is where it ends here. They're going to be continuing that wall a little bit and stepping it down all the way to wrap around to Russell. And then you can tell on the streetscape, you can see it there, how it's going to step down. So it's only about 18 inches, two feet there at the corner of Russell and 13th. Other questions for me?
Thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. We've enjoyed working with Jenny and Aaron Armstrong and Brett Diaz, the developer team, Van Pond, and Hunter and I with our firm are all sort of working together on these four houses. So it's been a lot of fun. It's also been great to have Hodgson and Douglas involved, and they've been responsible for a lot of this sort of site design. The thing that's interesting, and we're, we're the first one of the four to come up, but we are in the deepest hole. There was a basement for the educational wing of the old church, and you can tell in the photograph that Jenny had that, that there's sort of a hollowed out sort of section there, and that's sort of where our house sat, is going to sit. So part of what we were negotiating with, with staff was how we could transition this sort of really nice stone wall into something that sort of makes its way down the corner. But in order to do that, we kind of had to lift up just a little bit so that we maintain that sort of natural grade progression as you're looking at, at 13th. So that's basically what we're asking for, and I think Hodgson and Douglas did a beautiful job, sort of master planning the site. We're just sort of the first little piece in the puzzle and excited to kind of get it going. And I've got Aaron Armstrong here, the developer, who's sort of put this team together, including Hodgson and Douglas, to sort of answer and sort of talk about the project some more if necessary.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add. I live around the corner from this at 1901 Holly Street. This is a really important site, created by the tornado. You know, hopefully there will never be another opportunity like this again, but it is an entire block in, in East End that's, that has the ability to be redeveloped. So we, we selected who we feel are two great architects. We wanted to use some variation in the design. We want each house to be unique and distinctive. Many of the grandest homes in all of East Nashville sit within a few blocks of this location. So it's important for us to do it right. We wanted to select one landscape architect that kind of unified the site conditions and built one cohesive plan. We worked with Jenny and Robin and the rest of the staff to do that. We're excited about the project. For me, being close by, it's, it's kind of a, a really great opportunity. And we're happy to answer any questions. I think Michael did a good job outlining, but we have, we have taken considerable time to figure out how low can we keep the retaining walls by still, but also not putting the backyards in a hole where there's no place to create drainage. And that wall will not exceed any of the height that it currently is, and as Jenny noted, it'll step down to 30 inches and then even lower than that as we get to the corner of Russell, which we feel is appropriate and gives us just enough height so that we're not having, and we will have some steps down potentially from the dado down to the backyard, but we're not kind of sinking the backyard into a hole. And we've worked to kind of meet all the other guidelines that, that the staff laid out. So we appreciate your consideration, your time, and really grateful for Jenny and the rest of the team's insight as we've kind of worked through this process over the last several months.
Thanks, Mr. Armstrong. Open public hearing? Are the people wish to speak to this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Commissioners?
Not to interrupt, I'm sorry, but there was a letter of public comment that probably we've seen.
Yep. And, and we did get that one from Mr. Tisdale.
I'll say thanks to the applicant and design team, just for the stewardship of this opportunity. That was all I had to say. I'm certainly prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to preclude any additional discussion.
Go ahead.
With, yeah, with respect to 108 South 13th Street, I recommend approval with staff's recommendation as submitted.
Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Great. Thank you. Motion passes.
Yes.
We know a lot of it. Okay, next we have a fence signage proposal for 1, 2, 3, Second Avenue South. The proposal does not meet the design guidelines in terms of allotment and location, but staff finds our request to be appropriate because of the unusual condition of a fence across a street frontage. This property stretches from Second Avenue South to Third Avenue South with a building on Second Avenue and a fence obscuring parking on Third Avenue South, as you can see in these pictures. The signage on Third meets the design guidelines for signage allotment if a building was at this location. The majority of the signage on the side elevation will be visually blocked by the pedestrian bridge, and there is no signage proposed for the elevation running Second Avenue South. Staff recommends approval of the project as proposed, finding that because of the unique conditions, it meets section four of the design guidelines for the Broadway Historic Preservation Overlay.
Is the applicant here?
Oh, yes, sorry, the applicant is here.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lindsay Chris. I'm the applicant and representative of Barstool Nashville here. I want to start off by thanking Grace. She's been super helpful. I've never been in front of y'all before, so she was helping me, you know, explain what I, exactly I needed to do, so. And I also am a resident of the Germantown-Salem Town overlay, so I really appreciate everything y'all do, even with all the new stuff. It's gorgeous and I love it. So thank you all for volunteering your time here. I don't have much else to say about this sign, other than like what Grace said, we're not proposing painting the front Second Avenue facing side. It's only the Third Avenue South side. And then the majority of the length is pretty much blocked by the pedestrian bridge. We're not putting up a new fence. Nothing crazy, so that's all I have to say. If there are any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this project? Closed public hearing? So I thought it was important that we hear this case. The normal allocation on this would be 125 square feet, and this is several times in excess of that. But I think it is a unique condition. I think the staff report addresses the uniqueness of the conditions and, and why this comes before us. Any comments from commissioners?
I, I, I do have one, or some, this being near and dear to my heart, having, I guess, depending on your perspective, contributed to the amalgamation of, or, you know, however you want to describe the signage guidelines downtown. I'm curious, there's a question for clarification for staff. There are arrows that are, you know, you could consider part of the signage. And there was some discussion of, does directional, do directional- was some discussion of, does directional, do directional arrows, you know, whatever other things count towards the signage? I'm, I'm curious if, if that would be the calculation and I'm offering this more as a clarification, maybe an education to us all as we might deliberate this on, in another situation. We probably won't, but that's one issue. And I think the second is that, not that the applicant would, but signage rights being, by granting this sign that it, it doesn't further, I guess, open the door for, for this to be in addition to any future signage or if there's a building built here. I mean, it's a, it's a fence that is not terribly, it, it certainly could come down much easier than a building could. So, all those things taken. I have no objection to the staff's recommendation or any of those things, but maybe just a few other clarifications that I think are important, given how important signage is in the district.
So, the allotment for, for that side that's underneath the pedestrian bridge, the arrows were included in that number? Anything that's not just the blank space of, of the fence was included?
Anything else? Nothing? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Chair. With regard to 123 Second Avenue South, I move for approval according to the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Mahal? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Not for me.
Anything else? Great, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Early voting is, is in the other building. I'm not sure, but definitely this year.